Okay, welcome everyone to the nine thirty agenda with judiciary committee and health and human services committee. Is that the actual title of your committee?
Yes.
Okay, good, I got it right. This, we have one bill together, if there's a horrible technical failure, we will try again on Tuesday, March twenty one at ten thirty. In this room oh one six. And otherwise, we will go right to bill HB fourteen forty two, fourteen forty two. Expands the criminal justice diversion program and ends the allowable period of court order of assisted community treatment and considerations for extensions. First up on HB fourteen forty two, oh, and we do have a two minute time limit on testimony for both Zoom and in person. A little buzzer will go off if you're here in the room and there's a counter on the, on the screen for the Zoom testifiers. Okay, first up is behavior of health administration for Department of Health. Dr. Champion, are you, are you a?
Yes, for the Department of Health, Michael Champion, and Sam Alit, in support.
In support, okay. Next is Brandon Kimura for judiciary. Good morning.
Morning Chair Rhodes, Chair Sanwana Ventura, Vice Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Kino, members of both committees. Brandon Kimura, Deputy Administrator Director of the Courts. Judiciary stands in strong support of this measure. We really appreciate all of the efforts, collaborative efforts with folks up here. The Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney, the State Public Defender, and the Department of Health on this measure. It's a complex measure that's shifted significantly throughout session. Most, mostly, you know, we, we are proposing an SD one with significant changes to part one. And this is in response to very encouraging developments. We were recently on a trip to see a model site. A model approach to these issues in Miami, along with members, representatives from the Department of Health. Representatives from the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney and the Public Defender's Office. And while there, we made some agreements to do things differently without the need for statutory revisions. So that's why part of our proposed SD one.
I'm sorry, can people in the back here? Oh, can you just pull the mic closer?
Sure. So because of the encouraging developments and agreements in Miami, we are proposing a significant scale back of the expansion. In part one of some of the statutes, so with that, I'm happy to stand on the rest of our written testimony and I'll be available for questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is James Tabe, Office of Public Defender.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Chair Sanwana Ventura, Vice Chair Gabbard, and Vice Chair Kino, and, and members of the committees. James Tabe is State Public Defender. Much of my comments are probably similar to Mr. Kimura's. Our office, the Prosecutor's Office, Judiciary, and Department of Health. We are seeking to establish a new diversion program. That is based on the Miami, Miami Dade County model. They started this program back in two thousand and what they, they, they jokingly call it a twenty-three year overnight success. It's, uh, it's, they really have diverted defendants with serious mental illness away from the criminal justice system. And has reduced recidivism and reduced homelessness. I mean, it's, it's remarkable. The numbers say what it is. I don't know if you guys have the pamphlets or the, their brochures, but we can provide them to you. They're very professionally done and they have all the, all the details in their program. So we, so last month, Mr. Kimura indicated, we went to Miami, met with the officials over there, saw how the program worked. And with the help of, of few of them there, we all sat down or, or they all sat down together. And drafted, uh, came up with an agreement, you know, how to implement it in the district court level as well as in the circuit court level. And when I was quite surprised, it said they're going to launch this in April first. I'm thinking, really? That soon? They said they can do it. And so I'm optimistic. Let's just say when my folks came back. They were saying that they were impressed is it was an understatement. They really were optimistic about this. And public defenders were, were very pessimistic people, you know, so we're, 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 we're hopeful that this, this will work. Just want to caution people though, it's like it said, it took twenty-three years to get this perfect. Thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have Ian Suda for the Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning. It's the morning chairs and our committee members, Deputy Attorney General Ian Suda. We have the Department of Attorney General providing comments. Uh, our testimony is a little bit unusual in that we previously submitted testimony on a HD two, which is here for hearing. And maintain our concerns for that version of the bill. But we did have the opportunity to review the judiciary's proposed SD one. Uh, and that addresses the majority of the department's criminal justice concerns. Uh, and so if those amendments are adopted into proposed SD one. Then the department's concerns would only be as to some of the amendments modifying the way assistive community treatment process would be. Uh, change and the reduction of the penalty for the escape change for certain, escape charge for certain situations. Uh, these are described in more detail in our written testimony and thank you and I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next is Norah Lutton for Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Uh, just hearing the testimony I've heard, it sounds like we can support what are the SD one that's being proposed. I just want to bring to your attention that in correctional systems and jails, especially in the United States, there are more mentally ill people than there are in state hospitals. It is a very expensive and ineffectual way to address these things. So we really support any effort to divert people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Trisha Nakamatsu for the Department of Prosecuting Attorney in Honolulu.
Good morning.
Good morning, chairs, vice chairs, members of both committees, Deputy Prosecutor Trisha Nakamatsu, appearing on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Department. Um, we, our testimony that we submitted. Uh, written testimony indicate that we are in opposition to multiple parts of the bill, supporting in part. However, having seen the judiciary's proposed SD one, we are in support of the changes there. It appears to address nearly all of our concerns. Um, and as prior test buyers have indicated, that the Miami Dade County contingency came back extremely optimistic with assigned MOA. They are excited about trying this new approach for the nonviolent misdemeanors and promoting judgmental, uh, I'm sorry, dangerous drug in the third degree, PDD three. Um, which would address any expansion that was originally anticipated for this Act twenty-six program through this bill. Uh, one thing that we would like to note is that, uh, we do, we are still concerned that escape even for people who are part of the Act twenty-six program. Should be kept as is, um, as the C felony, and that is on page line, uh, page fourteen, lines eight through eleven. And if there are concerns about what will happen to these individuals once they're allowed to be placed in community-based treatment and if they have gone. This department is absolutely willing to sit down and come up with a plan or even MOAs and OUs on how that could be done. Uh, we don't think it's appropriate to be putting it in statute, particularly as we feel that Act twenty-six itself is still developing an influx. Available for questions again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Major Manuel Hernandez on Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, chairs, vice chairs, and committee members. Major Manuel Hernandez of the Training Division of the Honolulu Police Department. We continue to support House Bill fourteen forty-two and stand by our written testimony. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify this morning and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Next up is Alan Johnson for Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. Uh, in support, next is Ellen Gooby Carson. Uh, also in support. That's everybody who signed up for HB fourteen forty-two. Does anyone else wish to testify in HB fourteen forty-two, Zoom or in person? Seeing none, members, questions?
Do we have a copy of the proposed SD one?
It's in the testimony.
It's attached to the judiciary.
All right, I'll, I'll, um. This isn't, this isn't complicated enough bill that we could sit here for a long time. So let me see, um, well, first question, can I have, uh? Brandon Kimura back up for judiciary. So right at the moment, it sounds like it's kind of a law, it's, it's the Honolulu Prosecutor that's signed down to the MOA, right?
Yes.
So at the moment, it's not a neighbor island, um, program is not contemplated or? Or the, or the law who's going to be the guinea pig and will hopefully expand from there?
Oahu will be the, um. Starting it out at this time.
Program.
Yes, uh, but, um, you know, we've been working with, uh, Judge Lifeman from Miami for a few years now. And most recently, he was out in Hawaii and speaking, he had a seminar in each of the circuits, um, last fall. And one of the outgrowths, um, that, that each of the seminars in each of the circuits was to rejuvenate efforts to get the jail diversion programs. That were already existing in those programs back up and running. So those discussions are ongoing. Um, that would not be exactly the same as what we were proposed was the agreements that we made in Miami recently. But it would be, you know, consistent with and along the same line. So it's not that, um, the, the other circuits, there's a long way of saying the other circuits are moving as well.
Okay, good. Uh, there's some blanks for, you know, there's requests for positions and stuff, but there's no money amounts. Is that something you can get to us that we could put in the committee report?
Yes.
Okay, is it some point we gotta figure out how much this is going to cost?
Absolutely, thank you. Actually, not at some point, at some point between now and, and second cross, so. Okay, yeah, thank you, Chair.
Uh, let's see.
Chair, I do have a question. Is it going to be the MOA in the?
Yeah, go ahead, Senator Martin.
Is it an MOA that we're going to be, being, or is it going to be changing the law? So I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
SD one.
And SD one is going to change the law?
Well, it, it authorizes them, it, it, okay, so that's a good question. So my understanding is you, you believe the, the people who have, the organizations that have signed the MOA. Believe that they have inherent authorization to do this. So we're basically allowing you to do it, but it doesn't.
And enforcing it.
Correct, so basically, we're just taking out the diversion program that was in here to start with and just letting them do their thing for the, for the moment.
Collaborative agreements.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and there is in the, in the bill, a, um, a portion where it sort of lays out in a narrative form that would be in the session laws presumably. Um, you know, and a little explanation of the types of agreements, the nature, you know, the kinds of things that it would apply to. Um, that's not exclusive, but to sort of give the flavor to, to other of your colleagues and to the public. Um, and the proposed, uh, also includes a portion in there that would, um, require the, the parties or the stakeholders, if you will, be. Um, those who came to the agreement to provide an annual report to legislature to keep everyone updated on various aspects of how it's working.
So it doesn't require any change to any of the provisions in current law? So it's going to be, you're, you're, you're doing it within the current law?
Correct.
Yeah, so bill, bill does some other stuff too, so, yeah.
And appropriation.
And there's money, well, hopefully.
So, so I, I have a problem because I understand that prosecutor, um, went to Miami.
Yes.
And this is the same program that Judge Schlittman, who, um, gave us a presentation of in the Hawaii Supreme Court. That was open to all the legislators, right? Same one, right? And it's also the same one that the prosecutors from Hawaii County and Kauai County at the time, um, went to. And I believe because at that time it was a different prosecutor, you, there, there wasn't this MOA. So I commend you folks to get this MOA. And I, and I believe we have good hopes for the other counties. The only one that was missing was Maui County at the time. Did Maui show up in the, um, in the latest seminar?
Yes, so the, the most recent, with respect to, um, the seminars, so Judge Lifeman came out and he did one, uh, in each of the counties. So he, he flew to each of the circuits and for the big island, I believe he was, it was the same day. He did call in the morning, drove over and did peel in the afternoon. So that was, he, he, um, and we had a lot of judges and other folks out to, to participate in Department of Health as well.
And with the Attorney General part of this MOA, because they claimed that they, they wanted some more differences from adjustments from what you came up with in SD one.
They, they were not part of this, uh, MOA, I, I, on my understanding, and I, I hope I'm not misspeaking, you know, um, they are here. And Ms. Nakamatsu is here as well as at the Honolulu Prosecutors may have been conferring, but I'm, I don't want to speak for them at all.
Okay, thank you very much. And I am very hopeful and thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, I have a question for, thank you. I have a question for Department of Health, Dr. Champion, if you don't mind. So your testimony requests fundings and positions for Hawaii Urgent Response Center?
Um, yes.
I, I may be misremembering, but I don't remember seeing a dollar amount in there. Did you have, did you include that and I just missed it?
Yes, I believe so, and I, I believe so in the testimony, uh, on page, uh, three. Uh, it refers to the HERF, which is the Behavioral Health Crisis Center.
Okay.
And ten million dollars annually estimated.
Okay, so you had a ten, yeah, okay, I did see that. But for the actual setting it up to start with, was there a dollar amount there or?
Um. I can clarify that for you very quickly.
Okay, all right, we just, I just want to put something in the committee report to, uh.
Yes, sir.
To indicate where we're.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator Elafante.
Yeah, question, is this, I know we talk about Miami Dade County, but is this similar to the mental crisis diversion center in, in county in Seattle? Kind of setting up that way?
So, uh, the Miami Dade model, uh, includes diversion from the court into treatment.
Okay.
And, uh, that is the general framework of the Miami Dade model that's being replicated all over the country. Now, a part of intervening before people get to the criminal justice system is a crisis, adequate crisis system. Which includes a behavioral health crisis center. The one, uh, that gets a lot of attention and focus and that we're looking at is one in Phoenix and Tucson, the Arizona model. And, uh, other states have gone in that same direction. They look a little bit different in each jurisdiction. The one down in Miami, uh, that they're about to open within the next few months is almost like a layer cake. It has many different services in one big building. In other states, that's not in one building. But it's essentially a behavioral health urgent care center.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, ever.
Um, Mr. Tabe, you just, uh, you offered to furnish the committee with literature about the program. Would you be?
Doctor.
I don't have, I don't have a question. I just want to make sure that I. The, you had offered to furnish the committee with, uh, descriptions and.
Yeah, we have, uh, they have this nice brochure.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator Sanwana Ventura.
Okay, so, um, Dr. Champion, so like I said, I am super hopeful. The question is, in all of these models, like the one that Senator Elafante referred to, which I believe is pre-arrest diversion, this is post-arrest diversion. Uh, it still requires a lot of services. Will the Department of Health be able to handle it?
Well, so we're actively involved in a planning process because as you mentioned, there are many different components of the crisis continuum. That need to be in place for this to operate, uh, like a twenty-three year overnight success. Not that it's going to take us twenty-three years.
Okay.
However, one, uh, big component of that is a behavioral health crisis center and the plan to build that out across the state. Uh, we have in place now, uh, our Hawaii Care is one part of the crisis continuum, crisis mobile outreach.
So you think that what we have existing will be able to handle what we're going to be putting in place? So that basically, we're not just letting people off on the street. I mean, that's the concern that a lot of law enforcement have.
Yes.
Is that these are all well-meaning, but if you don't have the services in place and you don't have the mental health, behavioral health beds there to provide the services. We're, we're basically letting them off the hook.
Understood.
So the question is, is Department of Health be able, being able to gear up for this?
Yes, so that's why we are, are starting in Waho and with a pilot project, uh, to get learnings from that. And the, the, this, the, um, the resources that are going to be needed to support that.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I would say that, um, there definitely is an, an active process of assessing that. So that it can go not only for Waho, but across the counties.
And I'm just going to say there's a hundred million dollar ask already on the budget for, for this. So they are gearing up. Thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, if not, um. So, if we do the decision making in public, okay, so I was, so I need to talk to you for just a second. Are you okay with the recommendations we sent over last night?
This is not SD one.
Uh.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, that includes it, it's included in it. And then there's other stuff that we wanted to change as well. Okay, never mind. Well, we're even going to recess briefly for decision making, reset. Thank you, Becken for decision making.
Um, yes.
All right, so having conferred with the Chair of Health and Human Services, um, the recommendation is to, um. Accept the judiciary's amendments to the bleak proposed statutory language. That would have expanded the criminal justice diversion program to include nonviolent misdemeanors and defendants charged with promoting a dangerous program. A third degree is Honolulu Police Department, I'm sorry, Honolulu Prosecutor's Office, Public Defender, DOH and Judiciary. Have entered into agreements on post-booking jail diversion programs for these defendants in the first circuit. So we're taking out all that language that was in the bill to allow the parties to the MOA to move forward. We'll accept the judiciary's amendment to insert a new part to the bill that explains the agreements on post-booking of jail diversion programs. And requires detailed annual reporting on the implementation of agreements from the judiciary in consultation with the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office, Public Defender and Department of Health. Additionally, we'll add monthly progress reports from the judiciary in consultation with Honolulu Prosecutor's Office, Public Defender and Department of Health. To be submitted to legislature starting September one to describe progress to date. We'll accept the AG's amendment to better describe the process for defendant committed to the DOH while ACT petition is pending. We'll accept DOH's request to insert blank appropriations to the DOH to per, for the DOH to purchase staff and operate a statewide Hawaii Urgency Response Center. Um, there'll be technical amendments. We'll leave the, there's already a bad date. We'll leave the bad date. Um, in addition, we'd like to, under the proceedings related to nonviolent petty misdemeanors under seven oh four four twenty-one, there's a blank. Um, there's a blank that will put in seven days as the timeframe for filing a petition if it's been determined that the patient may be eligible for involuntary hospitalization. And in the same section regarding ACT, we'll take out the multiple, the multiple times that the patient has to reject the treatment. And just say if the person is eligible for ACT, then the department has ten days to file, uh, the petitions. Um, and we'll change the, annual report to forty days before the beginning of session instead of twenty. Which is for our convenience, not theirs. And then in the committee report, we'll note the further consideration that's needed about when the Director of the Department of Health is required to file an ACT petition. And department's role regarding management of those petitions. And also we'll put in, um. The, the money amounts that, uh, we discussed in testimony. Once we receive them. That's it. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendations to pass HB fourteen forty-two with amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes, aye. Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Sanwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure Pences.
Okay, for Health and Human Services, same, same recommendation. Chair Voltsai.
Yeah, Chair Voltsai, Vice Chair Voltsai, Senator Mario Waki.
Aye.
Senator Shumukor. Excuse, Senator Awah.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Good morning and welcome to this joint committee hearing between the State Senate committees on Commerce and Consumer Affairs and Judiciary Committee. I'm Jared Chihokalole, Chair of the CPN Committee. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube in the unlikely event that we abruptly end due to technical difficulties. Our reconvene date is Tuesday, March twenty-first at ten oh one AM in Conference Room two two nine. Uh, we have a lot of testimony on this one measure, uh, HB fourteen thirty-nine HD two. Uh, we do have a two-minute testimony time limit in the CPN Committee to allow everyone who wants to testify the opportunity. Uh, we have a lot, a number of agendas in different rooms today, so, uh. We have seen your written testimony. I encourage you to stand on it and use your time, uh, to either add additional comments or clarifications. Uh, or let others, uh, participate. We do ask you to stick around in case there are questions. Uh, HB fourteen thirty-nine HD two is relating to eviction mediation. It establishes and appropriates funds for a pre-litigation mediation pilot program. Uh, first up, we have, uh, the Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Chihokalole and Chair Rhodes and members of the committees, Gavin Thornton from Hawaii Appleseed Center. I just want to emphasize a couple of things from our written testimony. One, uh, this legislature passed, um, a couple of things. In response to the pandemic that were extraordinarily effective from a nationwide perspective. This concept of pre-litigation mediation coupled with rent relief is based on that, trying to build off that success. Um, two, I also wanted to emphasize, we included some, uh, recommendations on the amount of funding to support the administration of these programs. So in the bill, it talks about the rent relief being capped at, uh, eleven point two five million annually. Um, we're recommending that for the administration of that, around one point seven three, um, million. And then for the mediation centers that are doing the mediations, uh, one point four four. Um, this is based on discussions with a whole bunch of people regarding the costs during the pandemic programs. So happy to answer any questions about any of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have the Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support.
Morning Chair, it's Vice Chair, member of the committee, send this.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. Next we have Catholic Charities Hawaii in support. Okay, Aloha Care in support.
Good morning, Chair, it's Vice Chair, uh, members of the committees, anyone who wishes to testify in support, thank you.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. Hawaii Realtors offering comments. Thank you for standing on your testimony. Uh, next we have the Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, as members of the committee, Nicole Wood from Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. I'm happy to stand on our written testimony in support of this bill.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have, uh, Housing Hawaii's Future in support.
Sorry, Chair, they're currently not on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we also have, uh, a number of individuals submitting written testimony, but not indicating they will be present. Is there anyone in the room or online who I missed who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, I'll just read the following individuals and organizations and all in support. Uh, the judiciary of the state of Hawaii, DHS, Hawaii Housing Affordability Coalition, Mediation Center Pacific, Papa Ololo Kahhi. Kui Kahhi Mediation Center, Hawaiian Humane Society, Family Promise of Hawaii, West Hawaii Mediation Center, Hope Services Hawaii. Will Karen, Christie McPherson, Ellen Godby Carson, Maria Grams, Abby Seitz, Caroline Azelski, Shannon Rudolph. Signy Godfrey, and Gerard Silva is in opposition. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, unless you have any.
What we even do with the Realtors, uh, or, uh, the way and, uh?
There's nobody, there's no Realtor here though.
No, there is.
All right, I'm happy to pull up the day. I just was curious.
Oh, yeah, um, my inclination is to adopt their, their proposal.
Think of maybe at the, at the back end, we should extend it a little bit then if we're not going to start it up. It's not really going to get going until November twenty. See what I'm saying?
Okay, no, if, if the test. Go ahead, do that. Can you, when the committee reported insisting mediations can continue?
Yes.
Because the third circuit court has been doing this for a long time without statute. Because I, I don't want the Realtors to use it as a ploy to not do it. The third circuit's been doing it.
Okay.
You know, just in the committee report, this doesn't delay existing mediation for continuing to other time.
Uh. Let me see. It's not a three D, right? So we'll go November, we'll go, well, instead of June thirty, twenty twenty-five, we'll go to November one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, but it has a sunset too, right?
Yeah, that's the sunset. The sunset is twenty twenty-five.
Oh, I got you, all right.
June thirty, so we're going to talk the implementation to November one.
Yep.
Then we'll go.
And then committee report language that says, this does not.
Yeah.
Prohibit any ongoing.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so members, the recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. Uh, the, the first recommended amendment is to blank. Uh, the, the first recommended amendment is to blank the appropriation amounts out in Section 4 uh, in response to the, um, uh, specific appropriation amounts requested from the testifiers. That's the purview of the WOM Committee, so we'll move it on there. Uh, and we will adopt the Realtors' proposed implementation date of November 1st, 2023, and we will make the, uh, according, um, uh, sunset date amendment. So it will sunset November 1, 2025. And we will note in the committee report, actually, I'll just turn it over to Senator San Guanaventura to explain the committee report notes.
That, that, that the implementation of this bill in no way prevents ongoing mediations.
Okay, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Senator McKelvey, Chair votes aye.
Okay, recommendation 1439 House Draft 2 is to move as a Senate Draft 1. Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga's excused. I vote yes. Senator Richards is excused. Senator Awah?
No.
No. And I believe the measure passes.
Thank you. Same recommendation for JDC. Questions or concerns? Seeing none. Senator Gaver.
Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes. Aye. Senator Elefante.
Aye.
Senator San Guanaventura.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Measure passes.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
All right, coming back in for the next judiciary-only, um, agenda. It's our 10 o'clock agenda. Yes, and we have several bills up on this. The, if we have a big technical problem, we'll try again on Tuesday, March 21st at 10:30 a.m. here in 016. And it's a two-minute time limit, if you hadn't already heard that, for both Zoom and in-person testifiers. Uh, the Zoom has a little countdown clock and, uh, and in the room, there's a buzzer that goes off. All right, first up on the 10 o'clock agenda is HB 1097 relating to the Uniform Controlled Substances Act. Uh, first up on 1097 is Department of Law and Portion Michael Vincent uh, in support. And we have Jared Redula for Department of Public Safety.
Good morning, Chair. I'm most stand up and appreciate that's the one that's supporting.
Okay, great. Uh, that's everybody who signed up for HB 1097. Anyone else want to testify in HB 1097? Seeing none. Members, questions? I do have a question for Mr., uh, for Public Safety. We're trying to, we were just looking at this bill, comparing it to, there, there's another bill, like an annual bill where we update. The, the state updates the, um, the controlled substances based on what the feds have changed for the year. What, what's the difference between this bill and that bill?
Okay, so this is the bill.
This is it for the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did we, did we not pass another one earlier? Or did we do the SB? I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this is, this is the annual update from the Fed's bill?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, all right. It just looked different somehow. We're trying to figure out.
Yeah, um, uh, Chair, thank you very much. I can appreciate your question. There was a, um, uh, an error in the initial drafting of the bill that we had to take care of when it passed through the House. So in its current format today, it is correct and, and good for continued movement in the legislature.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Uh, next up is HB 1100. Sorry, any other questions?
No.
No. Uh, next up is HB 1100. This is Conformity Hawaii Income Estate and Generation Transfer Tax Laws, the IRS Code of 1986, as amended as of December 31, 2022. First up on 1100 is Gary Suganuma for the Department of Taxation. Okay, thank you in support. Next is Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Uh, yes, good morning, Chair. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh, we will stand on our written comments submitted for the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that's everybody who signed up on HB 1100. Anyone, anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1100? Seeing none. No questions? I do have a question for, uh, DOTAX if you don't mind. So years ago, when the, uh, I think it was the Bush administration raised the estate tax trigger limit way up, we kept ours where it was. Did that ring any bells? But I just want, I just want to be sure we're not conforming to that. This, this is just conformance to changes that were made in the federal law in the last year, not from things past of where we didn't conform.
Yes, so if, if there were any changes made, because we do this year to year, we take account, take into account changes made during the previous year during the, for the federal side. So, um, for this year's conformity bill, we're looking at, um, laws that were enacted by the federal government during the previous year.
Not something from years before.
Right. We can make changes if we want going forward. Um, that has been done in the past. But, um, for this bill, we're only looking at last year's changes.
All right, no, I just wanted to be sure. I, I like the, the lower, uh, trigger uh, wealth threshold that we, that Hawaii capped, and I just wanted to be sure we weren't changing that too.
Yeah, right now, we're, I'm just conforming based on.
Okay, all right. I think that's a yes. Okay. Uh, any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to HB, thank you. Move on to HB 1294. This requires every candidate for public office in Hawaii to use their legal name for election purposes. First up on 12, I'm sorry, I say 1194, 1294. First up on 1294 is Janet Mason, lead women voters. In support, Lynn Madsen in support. And that's all the testimony we have on HB 1294. Does anyone else wish to testify in HB 1294? Seeing none, I guess no one to ask any questions of, so we'll go ahead and move on to uh, HB 1344 relating to anger management. This requires certain criminal offenders to be ordered by court to complete an assessment and either domestic violent intervention or anger management course as part of their sentence. First up on HB 1344 is Darcha, Darcy Forester for Office Public Defender. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha. Um, so we are, are in support of this bill. The bill is the result of a collaboration with a working group, with the Prosecutor's Office, the judiciary and DBI providers. Um, it is, um, a, the purpose of the bill is to make sure that anyone sentenced for the three statutes that are covered for mandatory DBI, that they're actually receiving appropriate treatment. If you're in an intimate relationship, DBI is appropriate. But we need another option for people who are not in intimate relationships, brothers and sisters, like siblings, parents and children, and adult children, those types of relationships. Um, DBI classes aren't appropriate for those types of relationships because there are components to that that talk about things like sexual violence. And we're just seeing that that's just not an appropriate conversation for people who are not in intimate relationships. So we are asking that the bill be passed, and I'm available for questions. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Trish Nakamatsu for the prosecuting attorney for Honolulu. Good morning again.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the committee, prosecutor Trish Nakamatsu appearing on behalf of the Honolulu Department of Public Safety Attorney. We are also in support of the bill. We understand the issue that these service providers have been running into with people actually losing interest in, in services that they were ordered to simply because it does not apply to them. If it's a parent and child, auntie and niece, nephew, uncle. Um, things like sexual violence, jealousy are, are probably going to be more of a turnoff and helpful in any way to them. So we'd like to give the service providers that are to determine which of the services are most appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Nancy Creedman for Domestic Violence Act, Action Center. In support, Angela, Angelina Mercado, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Also in support, Kahala Dotson for Child and Family Service. In support, Ryan Kusumoto, President and CEO, Parents and Children Together. Also in support, Carolyn Lee in support, Deanna Espinas, Espinas in support, Jill Iraqi in support, Dark Harlan in support. Uh, that's everybody who signed up for HB 1344. Does anyone else wish to testify in HB 30? Yep, please come on up. Good morning.
Aloha, Chairperson Rhodes, members of the committee. My name is Jill Iraqi, and I'm testifying today as a private citizen in support of 1344. I've worked in the field of domestic violence for over 30 years now, over 20-plus years with the survivors, and almost nine years with the offenders. I never, I literally have helped thousands of people with this issue on this island. And I currently supervise a domestic violence intervention program. I'm here today to support this bill because it's important to give domestic violence intervention programs the discretion to divert clients to appropriate services. Domestic violence intervention is designed for intimate partners to help these clients choose nonviolence with their partners to keep their family safe. So domestic violence intervention typically challenges their belief systems around jealousy, sexual violence. We challenge their controlling and punishing behaviors of their partners while offering healthier alternatives. Whereas anger management is typically designed for people in non-intimate relationships with the victims in their cases. So it teaches clients impulse control, emotional regulation, and stress management. We do not address the belief systems or controlling behaviors with regard to intimate partners in anger management courses. So currently, the criminal laws mandate everyone into domestic violence intervention regardless of their relationship with the victim. And the DBI programs are forced to comply with that court order. We do get inappropriate referrals from other sources, but criminal court is the only source mandated by law to order these inappropriate services. We could use those valuable DBI slots for the clients who really need it. So what happens when people are ordered into inappropriate services? Well, we had one client who violated his sister's restraining order, who said, "I don't know how to relate to this stuff because my incident was with my sister." He ended up terminated from the program for having too many absences and could face possible jail time for not complying with that court order.
Thank you very much. Uh, does anyone else wish to testify in HB 1344?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Seeing none. Members, questions? Um, before you go, I do have a question for you. Uh, can you, can you just, uh, could I hear what the rest of, we had to say?
Thank you. Um, you know, and just this week, I actually did an assessment with a person who's going to have to sit through these lessons on jealousy. Um, because he violated the restraining order of a household member that's not even blood related to him. And so when I look back at these cases of people ordered into inappropriate services over the past year, several of them were terminated for having too many absences and are facing possible jail time because of it. That is why I'm urging you folks to support this bill so that it gives clients a greater chance of success if they stay in services because the services are relevant to their needs. We want the clients to engage in services for community safety.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? If not, um, Senator Elefante, do you mind taking the vote? You okay to go straight in? Yeah, okay. Okay, back to the top of the agenda, which is HB 1097. This updates the Control, Uniform Controlled Substances Act by adding substances scheduled under federal law. Uh, recommendation is to pass with technical amendments only. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Elefante.
Chair's recommendations to pass HB 1097 HD2 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair is excused. I vote aye. Senator San Guanaventura.
Aye.
Senator Awah is excused. Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB 1100 relating to conformity of the Internal Revenue Code. Um, recommendation here is to pass, uh, with an amendment making it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Elefante.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass HB 1100 HD1 with amendments of the three members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thanks very much. Next up is HB 1294. This requires every candidate for public office in Hawaii to use their legal name for election purposes. Um, I don't know, does this, does this feel right to everybody? I'm, I'm, uh.
Legal name for election.
I think right now you're allowed to use like nicknames and stuff. It's fine with me, but I don't know if anybody has any objections. All right, we'll go ahead and pass it then with an effective upon approval date.
So with amendments?
With amendments, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass HB 1294 HD1 with amendments of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB 1344. This requires certain criminal offenders to be ordered by court to complete an assessment and either a domestic violence intervention or anger management course as part of their sentence. Uh, recommendation here is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote on HB 1344, the pass unamended.
Chair's recommendations to pass HB 1344 HD2 as is, noting the presence of Senator Awah. Are there any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. That concludes that agenda. Uh, the next one is not till 10:30, so it will be, well, adjourn that and we'll go back in at 10:30. Mahalo. Okay, welcome back to the Judiciary Committee this Friday morning. This is our 10:30 agenda. If we have a major technical difficulty, we'll, we'll try again on Tuesday, March 21st at 10:30 a.m. here in 016. Uh, there is a two-minute time limit for testimony, both on Zoom and in person. If you're here, there, a buzzer will go off, and if you're on Zoom, there's a little countdown. Okay, first up on our 10:30 agenda is HB 586. This requires the judiciary to develop, implement, and administer an automated court appearance reminder that generates text messages and electronic mail notifications for upcoming court appearances in certain types of cases. First up is Michelle Acosta for the judiciary. Uh, with comments. Next is James Tabe, Public, the Public Defender. Morning again.
All right, Chair Rhodes.
Vice Chair. San Guanaventura. Or, I'm sorry, member. The members of the committee. Yes, James Tabe, uh, Public Defender's Office. Uh, currently, the judiciary actually has an E, maintains an E reminder system that allows anyone who signs up to receive text messages and, and email messages. Um, just a person just has to go to the judiciary website or actually fill out a form once they're at court. Um, you know, we, our office encourages people to sign up because this cuts down on no-shows and in turn cuts down on the bench warrants. And I do cite to a study in, in, in my testimony, written testimony. The only problem with the system is that people don't know about it until they go to court. So if we could get it on the citations, uh, I think it'd be a great idea because I would imagine most of the no-shows, or not most, but let's just say a good number of no-shows is the first appearance. And if we could get that cut down, I think this would help. And also, uh, lately with, you know, the pandemic and with parages and, and whatnot, courts, courthouses shut down, and it just creates a nightmare for judiciary to notify anyone that, first of all, there's no court. And then also with the next court date is. So I think this, the system would, uh, would really help to state out in just reducing the number of no-shows and bench warrants here. So that, that I have available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii in support. Darar Harlan in support, Marilyn Mick in support, Will Corona in support. That is everyone who signed up for HB 586. Does anyone else wish to testify in HB 586, 586? Seeing none. Members, questions? Let's see. Well, pretty much all my questions are for the judiciary. I guess we'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, um, which is HB 724 relating to campaign contributions. Uh, this evens the prohibition against contributions to a candidate committee or non-candidate committee by state and county contractor to include state and county grantees and the owner. to include state and county grantees and the owners, officers, and immediate family members of a state or county contractor or state or county grantee. First up on HB seven twenty four is Judge Foley with the Chair of the Commission on Improving Standards of uh, Conduct. Good morning.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, members of the committee, uh, and thank you very much for the time and attention you've given to this bill and and all the bills uh, from my commission. Uh, I support this bill because I think it would go a long way in dress, addressing the public perception of pay to play and that people make contributions to candidates with the expectation that they may get something in return. Uh, this would go a long way in addressing that perception, um, valid or not, and help restore uh, public trust in government operations. Thank you, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next is Gary Cam, Campaign Spending Commissioner. Um, in support, Debbie Shapiro, League of Women Voters. Also in support, Andrew Crossland in support, Lynn Madison in support, Shannon Rudolph in support, Marilyn Mick in support, Karen in support. That's everyone who signed up for HB seven twenty four. Does anyone else wish to testify in HB seven twenty four? Seeing none, members, questions?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, Judge Foley, sorry. Judge Foley?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I, I'm looking at, um, the more we, we restrict contributions, the more we're really edging towards public financing, which I'm for, by the way, because um, uh, wouldn't a friendly amendment to this be that ex, ex, to accept, I guess, public financing from campaign spending? Because campaign spending will technically be receiving a grant or subsidy from the state?
Um, I'm not sure if I understand that, Senator. I have submitted testimony in support of Senator Rhodes' bill, and have done so in the Senate and the House for the public financing. But there still will be people um, choosing not to go that way and accept private contributions. And for those that don't buy into public financing, this would address those contributions.
I understand, but that would be, oh, that, that's exactly it. So this is supposed to just, um, restrict those who choose not to do public financing? Because if we do the public financing, there will be people who will be like I, like I talked about, the chili and rice, where they need to get matching funds, and we need to name all of those five dollar contributions. And we don't know whether or not they're going to be an employee of a nonprofit and the like. So would a friendly amendment be basically, with the exception of those candidates, contributions to candidates who are not, who are seeking public financing?
Uh, I'll leave that to, to you, Senator, but as far as, and I recall your, your example of the Rice Chili fundraiser where twenty five dollar donations are except, requested small amounts, uh, but that would not have a great impact on that. That would just mean those that corporations and officers and immediate family members receiving contracts from the city and county or grants wouldn't be able to give money um, to that uh, Rice and Chili fundraiser. Um, your amendment, I'll leave up to you and the committee, but I, if there were no amendments, that's how it would work.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Uh, okay, uh, let me follow up on that, Judge. Uh, so since there is no, since there is, since there is no, uh, there is a pub, there is a public financing provision already, the partial one, but this bill doesn't affect those provisions at all, does it? It's not, it doesn't key in on those. It's on the, it's on the donation side.
That's correct, you're, that's correct, Senator Rhodes.
But then now, I guess that would mean that for the, for the matching donations, I, I don't remember the, well, I guess that's a question is just, does it cover the, the matching donations that you would make to get the pu, the partial public financing?
Without the amendment, uh, the Senator, the Senator has, has raised, it would prohibit um, going to those um, officers and employees and family members of corporations that receive government contracts or grants from, from participating in, in contributing uh, in the public financing scheme as written unless an amendment was made to, to provide for that.
Okay, but so, but, but, but the same logic basically applies, though. If you're donating to a campaign, even if it's for matching, you're still donating to a campaign.
That's right, and it would prohibit that. I guess the only difference is a practical matter. Um, this is really aimed at, even though it's not limited to the sort of major contributions that that people give, the pay to play, the, the Rice and Chili fundraiser usually isn't thought of as the pay to play.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, members?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Foley. Uh, we'll move on to the next bill, which is HB nine eighty. Uh, this allows notice of a bond or recognizance forfeiture to be sent to either the surety or the surety insurer for those who are into arcane knowledge. Uh, first up on HB nine eighty is Stephen Boomingwak or Garuda Allen for the Attorney General.
Good morning, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Steve Boomingwak. The department supports this bill. Our points are contained in a written testimony. Um, under current law, if bail bond company can refuse to sign for notices that are sent to them by certified mail and avoid the start of the search period and avoid paying the forfeiture, uh, which would normally be deposited into the general fund. Uh, we found the insurance companies to be more reliable in signing for notices that are mailed to them. Uh, the bill would allow the search period to start once either the bail bond company or the insurance company received notice of the forfeiture. Uh, we've also had situations where the court, A court has set aside a bail bond forfeiture without, uh, good cause. And the, the bill would allow the state to appeal in such situ, situations. Uh, I'll be able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That is all, that's everyone who's signed up for HB nine eighty. Anyone else wishing to testify in HB nine eighty in Zoom or here? Seeing none, members, questions? I do have one question for you, Mister Boomingwak. Um, so, I, I mean, it's the surety companies, the bond companies are playing games by not responding apparently.
Uh, that, that's correct. Um,
But is there any reason to believe that the, they actually, if, does the insurance company have any more uh, incentive to not play games than the, than the uh, the bond company?
Well, they're, they're both overseen by the insurance that they, but I, I'm not sure why, but the insurance company do see people be more responsible, um, in, in sense for their certified mail.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. Other questions, members? Okay, if not, um, let's talk about the uh, seven twenty four for a second. So my inclination would be to pass it out basically as is. It's, I think the same logic applies for the partial, we don't have public financing yet, so there's really nothing to reference.
We do have public.
We have full public financing. We don't have the SB fifteen forty three has not passed.
No, that's true, but we do have it existing.
So that's my, that's my, that's my, wanted to discuss it. So it it seems to me like the same logic applies if you're making a contribution to, for the matching, it's still.
You're just making it really difficult for, I mean, for, for grassroots campaigning. I mean, because if you're talking like Hawaiian electorate has a lot of employees, you know, I mean, they're not going to get a grant subsidy, but then there's another bill that basically says, oh, you know, the YMCA, the people who came here, I mean, they have a lot of people who volunteered to have employees of YMCA. We just.
Okay, so you're, you're
I'm just saying.
Your sense of amendment is to just take out, don't apply it.
Yeah, it doesn't apply, doesn't apply to anyone seeking the financial.
I think that'll work. We'll try it on anyways. You okay with that?
Thank you. We're gonna make an amendment.
Okay.
The campaign contributions.
Okay, that was, that was good, I think.
Okay, the amendment is basically, doesn't apply to public financing, candidate
Oh, okay.
contributions towards public financing.
We'll, we'll see how that goes. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll put it up the flagpole. Okay, so let's go back to the top of the agenda. Uh, HB five eighty six relating to judiciary requires the judiciary to develop, implement, and administer an automated court appearance reminder system. Um, the recommendation here is to pass with amendments, remove language on page one, line ten, that allows the judiciary to contract out the administration of the proposed mandatory notification so they can still contract out setting it up, but once they get moving, then they have to do it themselves. And we'll leave the date defective. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendations to pass HB five eighty six with amendments. Members present, are there any no votes or reservations?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awaz. The measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is HB seven twenty four. This evens the prohibition against contributions to a candidate committee or non-candidate committee by state and county contractors to include state accounting grantees. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with an amendment that would exclude the application of this bill to the partial public financing system that we currently have in place. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendations to pass HB seven twenty four with amendments. The members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is HB nine eighty. This allows notice of a bond or recognizance forfeiture to be sent to either the surety or the surety insurer. And it provides the state with, with an avenue to appeal when the court grants a motion or application to set aside a bail bond forfeiture. Uh, recommendation is to pass with technical amendments only. Question or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation is to pass HB nine eighty with amendments. Members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you very much, members. Thanks for being here. We're adjourned.
Thank you.